Is called to order. Will you please take a moment for a silent prayer or reflection? Terry, will you do the roll call, please?
Nicole Cohen, here. Archie Anna Elliott.
Here.
John Maston.
Here.
Lisa Ramon.
Here.
Kathy Cox.
Here. Please stand.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is called to the public, and we happen to have someone who is going to present something to us, and I need to read something about that. Call to the public is designed for items that are not on the agenda, so any item on the agenda, this is not the time to speak. And because of restrictions imposed by ARS 38-431.01, discussion and action on items brought before the board during this time will be limited to directing the staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later day, and there will be a five-minute time limit for the speaker. So we do have Evelyn Hunter, if you would come up to the microphone, please.
Hi, guys. I'm Evelyn Hunter, and my son's age here. He goes to Thunderbolt Middle School. He just started. So I would like to go over football tryouts and my interaction with the principal. I just wanted to know what happened, and maybe you can recall this later. I turned in all the paperwork and by the due date, which was a Friday, that following Monday night at Lake Havasu High School football field is where we were notified something was missing. The coach said it was not a big deal and need it straightened out for tomorrow's tryouts. That next morning, my sister took my son to school to go over what happened. I was out of town. Ms. Mulligan was, Ms. Mulligan, the principal, is who she spoke with, where I was called to be into the conversation. I apologized for the missing insurance cards and told her I did not realize it was missing. Something that, and I did, sorry, something that could have been easily fixed by handing her the card in that moment didn't happen. Mulligan said it was due Friday, and there's nothing she can do. I asked, why can you not just take the cards so my son can go to tryouts tonight? She replied that, that she had made her decision, and if I don't like it, I can go to the district or I can do a formal complaint. She made it very clear to say it many times to me and my sister and to my sister. When I got off the phone, Mulligan asked my sister for her professional opinion because she's in the medical field. My sister told her just one thing wasn't, the one thing, sorry, just because one thing wasn't on the paperwork, we wouldn't refuse the right to see them. We would take care of it and move on. Mulligan then said she called one time and the voice model school, my voice model school, then referred her to the district again. So I did the formal complaint that day, and that got me over. Yesterday, I went back to the school to discuss with me forward in a positive manner. I spoke with Mulligan about this and asked for a conference to her convenient time and date. In the meeting, I would like to have a school district person, a principal, sorry, the principal, vice principal, the Pop Warner manager, and my husband, because Pop Warner has the same tryout dates as Thunderbolt, and they were left without a team. By combining powers, no child would be left out. Mulligan let me know that she does not want to hire her up for the district and does not care about Pop Warner, but will have a private meeting with my husband and I, and I thanked her for her time, and I moved on. I think it was discriminating on what happened. I am not the only person this happened to. There was quite a few that came forward recently. I ask that you guys help out. Please fix something, because obviously she's a little overwhelmed. My son worked very hard to be, go on that football team, and he wasn't allowed. All this insurance card that I had, and there was no communication. She could have left me a note. She could have called my husband, and nothing was done. Hopefully it works out.
Thank you. I have a number three recognition of visitors, and we do have Sibyl Fox from the Elcats, who have made a donation to nurses.
Hello, I'm Naiina Fox, president of the Elcats. My name is Jill Hammond, and I'm the acting treasurer of the local Elcats. And this is Vanessa Brewster. She is first vice president of the Elcats. And again, we're here this evening to make a presentation to the board. Elcats are an auxiliary group of the local Elks Lodge Number 2399. Our primary purpose is to support the functions of the lodge, and this past year, we have set a goal to increase our contributions to the Lake Havasu community. Through our extensive fundraising, we are able to donate thousands of dollars each month to local charities, organizations in support of our community. Board President Cox, Superintendent Assayer, this evening, we are here to present a check for $1,600 to support the nurses' office for each school. We know that the role of the school nurse is critical to student success in school. For many students, the school nurse is their only contact with a healthcare professional. They are the ones who know when a student is in need, whether that be a referral to more extensive services or just a hug and a Band-Aid to send them on their way. We hope that these funds will be helpful in the important work that they provide each day, to buy that extra pair of Hello Kitty candies for someone who's had an accident, a pair of kneaded glasses, or some piece of equipment that may make their job easier. As Elcats, we know that student success is important, not just for our students, but for the whole of our community. If there are any other needs that you identify in which we can help you, please let us know and reach out to us in the future.
Well, we are very appreciative. Would you like to read a segment?
Okay.
Oh, no, this is the chapter. You just get money for this. She's the money. I write the chapter. Many of you guys did all the work, $600. I can tell you, our nurses need it, and they come up with situations for kids all the time, and a lot of times they pay out of their own pockets for things they know the kids need, so this will be deeply appreciated. Our gratitude to the Elcats. Is Mrs. Malkowski here? I am the speaker. Oh, okay. From LHCA, we're still under recognition of visitors.
President Cox, members of the board, directors, welcome back to a new school year. I am Carol Malkowski, the Lake Havasu City Education President. Who and what is Lake Havasu Education Association? We are the LHUSD Local Education Association. We are established in 1967. We are a wall-to-wall association, which means our members include both classified and certified educators as well as associate community members. As an association, we keep our members updated on local, state, and national issues. We believe our students, no matter what zip code, deserves the best education available. We work with our governing board through monthly, sometimes weekly dialogue. We support the LHUSD staff, all the staff, by staying aware of all that's happening locally as well as the state and national level. We attend meetings. We sit on district committees. We organize opportunities for our state legislators to be in our classrooms. We communicate with our state legislators during and not during sessions. LHCA is committed to LHUSD staff and students and governing board, and we look forward to a great year. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
And the second?
Second is?
Mrs. Fleming?
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes, I'd like to note that our student travel has a total of .12 metric tons of CO2.
John Maston?
Yes.
Archie Anna Elliott?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Under all business, item 5.1, Mrs. Festadagel. Madam President and Governing Board, it is recommended the Governing Board approve the change in policy regulation JRR student records. As law enforcement is considered to be a third party under FERPA in order to share personally identifiable information with law enforcement, including SROs, that information must either be considered directory information, or families must give prior written consent. In order to maintain safe schools and ensure the safety of students and families of LHUSD, law enforcement will be treated differently than other third parties and granted access to student phone numbers, dates of attendance, and enrollment status. We have consulted with legal counsel in making this change. The change is on page four of 14.
I move we approve 5.1 as presented.
Second? Our second?
Is there any discussion?
Is there any discussion?
No, but I just wanted to know, because I understand that there will be a subpoena for any video.
Correct, and that's, that information included under my notes, and so any video information would be, have to be subpoenaed. This is just the directory information that's specifically listed.
Thank you.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Archie Anna Elliott?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes. Item 5.2, Mrs. Assayer.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I would like to respectfully ask the board to postpone voting on revisions to policy IHAMD and IHAMD-R for consideration at a future meeting and after at least one additional work session. After last week's work session, we know there are still strong conflicting feelings in our community about what is right for our community. There were at least three conversations that were occurring at the work session, none of which were clear and understood by all present. First, there was the actual policy conversation. Should we, as a district, provide sex education in our school curriculum? Second, there was the conversation about and the defense of the curriculum offered by Mohawney County Department of Public Health, which has been taught in our schools without board review and approval. Third was the conversation about the future risks of the new generation of comprehensive sexuality education curricula, and how these dangers should be considered as a craft policy language. Our board did not have time to adequately discuss as a board what might be the best approach to policy language revisions and why. More information and discussion is needed to flesh out board member concerns about providing sex education, as well as board member reasons for providing sex education. I have spoken at length with our attorney, Ms. Tosca Henry. Ms. Henry pointed out that this is an important conversation for our district board as local leaders under local control, and it is worth taking the time to get it right. Any policy recommendation should be well discussed and consider all of the information and perspectives before coming forward for a vote. Ms. Henry also reminded me that once policy language is crafted, we need to have the policy language reviewed by our legal counsel to ensure that we are in compliance with the law and not creating future liability. For these reasons, I recommend that the board postpone item 5.2 to a future meeting and recommend another work session for board member discussion based on all of the information available.
Madam President, I couldn't agree more, and I would motion that we postpone 5.2 to the next board meeting. I'd also, Superintendent Assayer, alarm that as we wait for the second, I really would like to have the overview of all three proposals currently under consideration from board members.
May I second that motion? Can we?
I would like to ask if the, if the board votes to approve the postponement and scheduling of work session in a interim, if there is a time of day that the work session should be scheduled by preference of the board.
As usual, I didn't want to be here for government meetings before the next board meeting.
So we can try to schedule while you're looking here?
Yes.
There was, at the work session, there were several comments made that parents, there was not a good time for parents to show up, so I would just like to take that into consideration.
I would stick up some time in six o'clock for the next work session.
And I would like to withdraw my policy completely from the discussion, because it's not appropriate now. It's my policy that I had suggested for 5.2 was before we knew that we were doing a program in our schools, so I'd like to withdraw that altogether, and I will have another proposition that I will submit.
Do you second? Just let me second. I second. Okay, anybody else? Mrs. Fleming?
John Maston?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Archie Anna Elliott?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
New business, item 6.1, Mrs. Wolter.
Thank you. I am going to be substituting for Mrs. Wolter this evening. She actually is the State Director's complex. And so, Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended that the board approve the Quality First Childhood Scholarships Provider Agreement between Valley of the Sun United Way and LHUSD Little Knights and Smuggler Developmental Preschools. The First Things First preschool scholarship program provides access to quality preschool programs to eligible low-income families. This program requires annual renewal by the Lake Havasu Unified School Issue Governing Board. The Valley of the Sun United Ways is the direct recipient of First Things First funding. Quality First, First Things First, through United Way, awards the annual preschool scholarships to participating eligible programs. This agreement will be in effect pending final approval from July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020, with consecutive yearly renewal options pending Quality First Star Reading and availability of First Things First funding. This agreement has been reviewed by the board.
I know that we approved 6.1 as presented.
I second.
Discussion? No discussion?
Archie Anna Elliott?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
No.
John Maston?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes. Item 6.2, Mrs. Festadagel.
Madam President and Governing Board, it is recommended the Governing Board approve the following performance plan for 2019-20, also known as the Classroom Site Fund. The Havasu Unified School District has high expectations for our students, teachers, and administrators. In that context, the LHUSD 301 Performance Plan is designed to compensate teachers for attainment of school goals as well as individual performance. This year, LHUSD District 301 commending that to review this framework and made no significant revisions. A full copy of the document was forwarded to the board electronically, listed below our members of the committee. As mandated by the state, this plan must be approved by the Governing Board each year.
I move that we approve 6.2 as presented, also under that.
Any discussion?
I just appreciate all the work that I've landed out. It's a big rework. Lot to read though.
Mrs. Fleming?
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Archie Anna Elliott?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes. Item 6.3, Mrs. Assayer.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended that the Governing Board approve that Lisa Ramon, Board Vice President, John Maston, Board Member, Diana Assayer, Superintendent, Michael Murray, Director of Business Services, and Jamie Festadagel, Director of Personnel Technology, travel to the Arizona School Boards Association Annual Law Conference on September 4 through 6, 2019, at the JW Marriott Camelback in Scottsdale. 2019 ASBA Law Conference will include pre-conference on social media, schools, and the law and educational equity. Three nationally recognized keynote speakers on various topics and 2018 breakout sessions will also be held. This item has been reviewed by purchasing and a completed travel packet has been received by the travel department. The amounts that are listed here are the maximum cost that we estimated. These are not going to be the actual cost they will do us.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve? I move that we approve 6.3 as presented.
I second.
Any discussion?
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Maston?
No vote.
Archie Anna Elliott?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
The next item, 6.4, is something as Board President that I submit, and it is concerned our, the Arizona School Boards Association, and every year, they have a draft of what they call their political agenda, and this is the one for 2020. And we have a choice tonight. We can sit here as a board and go over the items, or we can choose a delegate to go to the assembly and represent us, and that is what we did last year. So I will just briefly, here are the main points for the Arizona School Board Association which is promoting, to adequate and equitable funding of school districts to at least the national median for people funding. Number two, to preserve and strengthen local control. Three, improve outcomes for all students. Four, require public accountability for taxpayer dollars spent on education. And then under each, there is a list of different items that different groups are advocating for. So we can certainly do whatever the board would want, but Mr. Maston represented us last year, and I thought he did just a great job, and I would move if he would accept that he go as our delegate.
I'd be happy to.
While he represented us, we did discuss it, and he represented the board's will.
That's true.
It wasn't left up to us from Maston.
And so, I'm perfectly happy to go through these items tonight, if that's what you would like to do. It is a different board from the board last year. So then, Mrs. Fleming, if that's how you would like to proceed and do that, let's go ahead if we can. We have, we have, Mr. Maston has accepted.
Point, point of order.
Okay.
You started a motion, and we didn't get a second.
I was trying to get one just then. So can I have, can I have the second? So I'm going to second the motion for Mr. Maston to represent us.
We can, we can flesh this out with discussions.
Okay, all right. So.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a second. So the motion is that Mr. Maston represent us, but let's go ahead and discuss the items. The first one is to adequately and adequately fund district schools to at least the national median for people funding. So if you will look, there are several items under that. If you, any, if you oppose or particularly advocate for anything, just let us know. Go ahead, look down the list.
Before we, before we discuss a little bit more widely, I just wanted to note that this is on September 7, and you're going to be in Phoenix the 4th through the 6th of September for the end, so just want to make sure.
So just for the audience to know, such things as fully fund full-day kindergarten and include kindergarten students in the override calculations, when we do have an override, that they would be included as well. Full restoration of the district additional assistance funding, an index for inflation, provide for new school construction funding. So that's, if anyone on the board, looking down at items, is there any particular one that you disagree with or heavily advocate?
I just have a question about how this goes. So you're just voting yes, no, yes, no, how did that go last year?
It's, it's actually a floor discussion.
Okay.
And so, and so there were a couple of things that I approached, and they escaped my memory right now because I'm spending here, that I was able to get a talk on, actively on, actually on a floor, floor motion, change a couple of positions based on our board discussion last year.
So I'm just curious, because a lot of it seems really fluffy. There's not, for instance, number seven under this particular item, eliminate unfunded mandates and administrative burdens. That sounds great, but seriously, we hear these high-level talking points every single year. I'm curious what those would be, so I kind of think that these are all foregone conclusions, and they're just looking for consensus, but anyways, that's just my thought, and I don't know how that goes, because I haven't been since my first year, so.
Anything else under the board's?
It's, it is very fluffy. I think a lot of this is to help the Arizona School Board Association to deal with it at some level, that they're doing something. Revising this whole finance formula, I think, is a highly lofty goal. The, I think, I kind of scratch my head and provide funding for preschool programs, things that might be considered outside the menu of the K-12 qualifier. I know they're trying to increase competition at some level, but again, this is a lot of what's feel good about.
So one of my concerns would be that full-day kindergarten funding, I'm fine with that, and I'm fine with that against ABM, so long as they're also not going to mandate full-day kindergarten. Because I, you know, I don't want them to say, well, we're going to fund it, and then we're going to mandate the kids are in the school full-time.
Right.
If I could point out, on the first page under that funding, there is item number two, which talks about revising the school finance formula. One of the items under there I would see is to look at weighted student funding formula, which weights the funding based on students of poverty. I would be interested in understanding if they've done any simulations of how that would distribute funds, and whether in fact rural schools would be advantaged by that as opposed to some of the larger school districts with more generous income options.
And I'd also like to note their push for a dedicated revenue stream for K-12 would include American Lands Council, which our governor vetoed that bipartisan effort a couple of years ago, because we're due that money, we're due that land and that tax revenue. I'd like to know if that's part of their, you know, it's great to suggest that we have a dedicated revenue stream, but what's the suggestion?
Right. That's kind of, that's kind of why I classified it as going to identify the string and fully flush it out, which is really tough to say that we're going to go after money. At that point, it's good. Hit Lake Havasu, if you have any more money in Lake Havasu. Yeah, it's not a issue. We feel good because we asked.
Anything else? First topic. I have that. Next topic, preserve and strengthen local control.
So on number three, it says change override by to increase language to better reflect what voters are being asked. We need serious clarification on that, because I don't remember offhand, but there was an effort to, boy, and if anybody in the audience, like Carol or somebody else, can recall, there was an effort to change the way the language went out, but it was not, it was not fair to us, and I can't remember, and they don't have it included in here, so it's hard for me to, to go back in my memory. Do you recall?
You're absolutely right. It was not in our favor. But I have a question. When you have voted on these, or when you're at the Assembly, is that sometimes the things that, for instance, a member, Conan things that, for instance, a member opponent is referring to, is there task force that are possibly created, and you are voting on whether or not you will proceed in that way or not?
You're basically, you're voting on the lobbying agenda, work where they're going to go with the lobbying effort. And on the floor, in that delegate assembly, is where the rubber hits the road on a lot of these. So for instance, if the change would favor us in override budget increase language, absolutely let's go in and let's advocate for that. But if they're going to turn around and they're just going to be nebulous about it, it's okay. Should we vote for it or shouldn't? Probably don't have enough information to really cast a vote. Most times, we get some really interesting floor arguments. I had two people in back at me heckling me about some things I said that were normally conservative into the spectrum. So it does get interesting. And it is, you go to really good old fashioned Wall Street politics.
I just know in my experience of this location, at times when there's an issue at hand, the request or the vote goes towards a task force, creating a task force, do I financially put money towards this to look at? So I didn't know if you had.
It literally goes straight into the lobbying group as to what they're going to pursue with the legislature.
Well, I have major concerns on that one.
Okay, I'll get more.
Well, you're going to be there voting, so you can get more info later. You know, it's, am I remembering correctly? This didn't look like this last year.
Yeah.
And they actually asked for our suggestions about what we wanted them to do. And this is, this is really actually really ridiculous, actually.
Top down.
Sorry.
Top down.
Anyways.
Yes.
I really don't know how they expect school boards to sit and go through this and actually make informed decisions on each of the 20 items plus, under each heading, or 10 to 20 items.
Well, a lot of.
When there's really not any information here, so.
Right. Again, feel good.
All right. I don't want to labor the whole thing, but.
Under improve outcomes for all students?
I'm adamantly against increasing the compulsory attendance age from 16 to 18.
We were last year as well.
Yeah.
Some people in the audience, even some new school board members, might be shocked that educators would not want students to have to stay in school until they're 18. What we've learned from reality in dealing with these kids is these students, most of them show up at the high school as freshmen, and they just don't want to be there. And they just make it perfectly clear, they don't want to be there, they don't come to school, they don't turn in at work. And then they know they can get out of school permanently when they're 16 years old. And they just haven't grown up yet. And one of the best things that happens with those kids is that they drop out, terrible thing, but then after a year or two, they ask to come back to the high school and finish their education, because as you know, some of you will like that too. You just had to grow up and, you know, figure out what's important and what's going to help you in life. So that's, that's my belief, is to have those kids in school for four years and make them calm. And then you have to think about things like this. So what is the enforcement? What are we going to do if parents, you know, accused of truancy, violating truancy laws, that they have to get their kids there? Are we going to send the parents to jail? I mean, really, when you start thinking about it, it's not realistic, any possible way to pull something like this off, but that's my opinion. Okay. Anything else?
I'm in favor of fully restoring the ninth grade CTE, CTE eligibility.
Me too.
But I'm not in favor of extending it to age 21 regardless of graduation status.
I'm worried that we can vote.
I don't know what number five is.
Going back to number four, I need to clarify a little bit. So if we happen to have a senior at the high school who has turned 21, say, in November, and he's in a CTE program, then would this preclude him from, or at least we might leave him in the program, if this program's not going to get any funding?
Actually, no.
It says.
Actually, no. What they're saying there is that we would leave our enrollment in our CTE programs open to anyone 21 years of age, regardless of whether or not they graduate.
Oh, so that's, it's not, so it's really about the one, the public? Yeah. Oh, guys, I understand.
So you would graduate from high school, and you would go, gosh, I really hope I really should have taken that carpentry class.
Okay.
And you're now 20 years old, and you come back and paid a couple of months of carpentry at the high school.
Yeah, for free, yeah.
Right.
And then you have a situation of 21 year olds, there was 15 year olds.
Doesn't matter.
But I just want to make sure that if the 21 year old happens to be in the high school and has not graduated yet, could still continue with that, with his program until he graduates. Students, all students, okay. Anything else under this topic?
Number six, I don't even know why they would put that in there. Rationale, school employees take seriously their statutory obligations to keep electoral politics out of the classroom, and he intends to expand this obligation or impose fines or sanction harms the process of academic inquiry and critical thinking, and may even infringe on employees' right to free speech as a private citizen. But free speech as a private citizen doesn't apply during working hours. Am I wrong? So I don't even understand why this is in there. I support number seven.
What do we think is number six is a board? I'd like, I'd like board-wide guidance on that. Is my personal thought process is number six would be a no vote?
As far as I'm concerned, with Nicole's point about the school day, I agree with her as far as when employees in the classroom around students, they don't really lose their free speech. But I thought this was simply talking about free speech outside of the classroom day. So if the classroom day has not started yet, I have no opposition.
The first line of rationale is school employees take seriously their statutory obligations to keep politics out of the classroom.
Out of the classroom, right. So for example, this is really that red for Ed. Wearing that red shirt is a freedom of speech issue to me, and this is a way to curb that. I don't want to.
I don't, I don't think so, because what it does is it says to the district as an employer, that the district cannot impose sanctions on what an employee does during their workday. And that makes the district as an employer different from other employers. And as an employer, I look at that, I've never written someone up or fined someone because they were appropriately attired or because they said something during the workday that I didn't necessarily agree with. But on the same token, we're talking about the size of classrooms during the class schedule during the day. And from my perspective, I think that's important, because I think that bringing points of view and political speech into a classroom may not necessarily be the best thing of all grade levels. And I think that for, we should make that in our minds.
I would agree with that in general, although the first statement does say defending an effort to chill the freeze price of school employees. So they, again, it's hard to know without additional information, that they might be talking about future actions that might be taken, and sort of building a defense to address those future actions. I don't know. As I said, it's hard to, it's hard to understand exactly what they're saying, because there is no, there aren't any examples given or further information.
As written, I would say we go.
I think the Constitution protects every employee's right to free speech when they're not on the clock. Like any employee sitting in the audience right now is on their time, but the one sitting behind this, they're on the clock. So there's the difference, in my opinion. As soon as you are not on the clock anymore, so to speak, then.
Yeah, something like wearing a red shirt.
But it doesn't reference that.
I know, that's what makes it difficult to discuss.
Right.
So.
And wearing a red shirt is political speech on the clock. It is bringing it into the classroom.
Well, I'm not, I know that is your opinion. I'm not sure if that has been determined. I don't, I don't know. Who will determine that? I don't know.
Volatility kind of determines that, because if you're a teacher and you're on the clock, and you're wearing a political shirt in the classroom, then you are using the political speech in the classroom, which this is talking about. Regardless of whether you agree with the movement or the reasoning behind it, that is free speech and that is using your free speech on school property in the classroom, which we're saying.
To clarify, I don't think we're attacking if somebody's wearing a red shirt at all. I think we're talking about the political use of a red shirt. In other words, it would be emblazoned with something that would advocate at a particular point. And I think there's a dividing mark there. If it's, and just because I know that it's Wednesday, it's red shirt day. If you wear a red shirt on Wednesday, I don't think that's making a political statement that a student would interpret. If you're wearing a red shirt that says red for red across it, that may be a different story in context.
Or Trump 2020?
Right.
Same thing? That's the same thing, so.
No, I agree with that.
So then on six, we're supported, no on seven.
I'm not saying no, I'm saying that is a different question.
That's what I'm saying. It makes no sense to me.
So how should I vote?
Maybe you can, maybe you can give them to clarify. Maybe they have some examples in mind that cause them to include this in the platform or right now. I'm not sure what's really trying this. Any other, anything else under improve outcomes for all students? I put about required public accountability for taxpayer dollars spent on education.
I think number one, I agree with number one. I think there should be the same rules for transparency and disclosure for ESAs and charters and public schools.
Agree with all of them.
I no longer agree with number two. I advocated for that for a long time, but I no longer agree.
You share with the board.
Repeal any program that gives public funds for private schools, vouchers, empowerment scholarship accounts, and private school subsidies, student tuition organizations, and prevent any further expansion.
I don't agree with number two either, and I'm giving specific examples to why I don't agree with that broad language. If a parent wanted to utilize school for severely disabled child or language in that, because it's done by ESA through our laws now, would stop that, those public funds from being used to assist that child. I don't like that at all. I know there are broad implications of down the chain, but it's something that I thought I.
But then, I take your point, but if you are a representative at this meeting, I think that would be a really good point to clarify, and make sure that is not, that parent is not limited in that way. Anyone else?
Well, I would agree with the overall spirit of what's written here, with the understanding that there are the types of exceptions that you're talking about that are, as I said, concessions.
The word here used is repeal, can't it?
Right. I agree with the word repeal. But any program that gives public funds for private schools, vouchers, and private school subsidies, obviously repeal.
But repeal, meaning all, every.
And I just said that I understand that there are some sort of outlined exceptions.
And John, John started this one. All right, so.
I agree with number three. Governor promised that he was going to do that in 2014, I think, so still hasn't come to fruition, and we've got it on our list for the past two years. That's to require comparative classroom spending audits for school districts and all other institutions that accept public funds, and define classroom spending as both instructional spending and student support spending. Very great thought.
Ready to back this issue for a board?
I support that.
Yeah, I do too.
Require consistency in the recusal of a board member from any decision in which the member or the member's employer stands to benefit financially. If we can get that applied, to apply to charter schools, that would be wonderful, too.
Anything else? So Mr. Mastin, do you feel that to some extent, any of that we?
Do I feel dangerous?
I was going to say, once we get in the authority, you can go rogue into that.
All right, then, thank you for your help. Okay, Mrs. Sire? Yes, I want to call the phone, okay. Mrs. Fleming?
John Mastin?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Archana Aliar?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Item six point five, approval to purchase three school buses, Mr. Murray.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve the purchase of three school buses through Canyon State Bus Sales at an amount not to exceed $575,000. Bond funds will be used to make this purchase. Bond funds are now available to purchase school buses as presented to the Lake Campus Unified School District Number One voters prior to the November 8, 2016 election. Quotes from Canyon State Bus Sales are attached to this agenda, actual item for review by the governing board. Close the list to purchase two 84 passenger route buses and one 42 passenger special needs bus. This pricing includes all requested options, preparation, service, and parts, plus tax and delivery. These quotes were made available through the Mojave Educational Service Cooperative. See the contract number there? And an approval amount of $575,000 has been requested to cover against sebells, as I have been refused, reviewed by purchasing.
Is there a motion to approve six point five?
So.
Second. So we move to second. I moved it.
I second.
All right, you got that.
We'll push forward.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Murray, are these buses being used to expand the high school routes or for another purpose?
Currently, what will happen is we do have one sped bus and one route bus, which will go to auction, and we'll keep one of these remaining route buses as a spare. So that will allow us to have two sped, spare buses and one, two route spare buses, should we have a couple buses go down. So right now, it's just to move agent fleet.
Can you let us know when they go to auction?
Spring of 20.
It'll be, we probably won't take delivery of these until, they probably won't come till February or March.
February, March. Then they'll go to auction probably April, May of 20.
And where does that actually take place?
Right, right here on the property. It's an online service that we do through purchasing, and anybody from the public, it's a public site, they can go on and they bid. We put a reserve, kind of like eBay, very similar to eBay, we put a reserve on it. Once it meets reserve, highest bidder after X amount of time goes to that person.
And will this be the one, the specialized bus that goes to auction? Will it be the one with the door in the middle?
I have to.
I just really want.
I love that the same thing.
All right. No, I was being serious. I would like to make it.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Karens, did I hear you out there?
Yes.
You're there, yeah, okay.
And we've got the top of the line air conditioning, all of the... All the advocacy package.
Of course.
Anything else? Okay, Mrs. Fleming?
Mr. Nasten?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
The Popeye?
Yes.
John Nasten?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Item 6.6, Mr. Murray.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve the procurement of architectural services to EMC2 architects for the design and safety and security improvements to district lighting facilities. Payment will come from bond and our capital funds at a not to exceed amount of $500,000. The safety of students, staff, and visitors are a priority for the district. Recent events and those of the past bring about the need to reflect and assess the current strengths and vulnerabilities of our facilities. With the assistance of district personnel, city agencies, and others, multiple campus walkthroughs have occurred. Upon completion or near completion of design procurement relating to construction services will occur and will come to the board at a later date. The italics there, just for information, in the spring of 2017, the district did go out for a request for qualifications, where we evaluated those who responded, and the district did procure, or did qualify, two architectural firms, EMC2 being one of those. You see that EMC2 does have... We do work with them through a purchasing contract through One GPA Cooperative, and this item has been reviewed and approved by purchasing.
I move we approve 6.6 as presented.
I second. Any discussion?
Mr. Murray, is this basically a culmination of an ongoing talk about how we secure our campuses?
That is correct. It started well over a year ago, where we looked at two facilities. We wanted to just get a basic idea as to where we stood as far as the safety and security of our campuses. For the most part, they're very secure, but there are some areas that we do need to address to minimize access and perimeter access to our buildings. So, yes, a short answer to that, it is a result of conversations that have already occurred. With this, we want to develop a set of working blueprints for all of our facilities so that we can then prioritize, once we assess and see what our goals are, to prioritize and look as to how we would address our facility.
And what is our plan if we do decide to go forward with making these improvements to build for... How do we finance that?
It would happen through bond and our capital funds.
So that's, those are funds not existing currently?
We do have some right now to do in this project as far as funds from Series A of our bonds. But we are getting ready to go out for Series B issuances, which will happen in around October, November, this year, just a couple months.
So you perceive the entire set of campuses that we intend to upgrade, the current bond issuances, the voter approved bonds?
Yes, Series B will be roughly three years of money that will have available. Then Series C will follow that for another three years. So I would say that this, depending on what the drawings produce and the costs that are associated with it, we're probably looking at a three to five-year window to address these things within the district. Some of them will begin much earlier than that. But if we're looking at the district as an entire district, probably three to five years dependent on the cost to upgrade these facilities.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Fleming?
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
The Popeye?
Yes.
John Nasten?
Yes.
Archana Aliar?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Item 6.7, Mr. Murray.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve the procurement of architectural services to EMC2 architects for Phase Two of athletic field improvements for Lake Habeasue High School and Thunderbolt Middle School. Payment will come from bond funds at a not to exceed amount of $450,000. As part of the comprehensive plan to renovate athletic fields at Lake Habeasue High School and Thunderbolt Middle School, the passage of a voter-approved bond became necessary in reality in November 2016. Citizens for Habeasue Schools took the lead in communicating to the community the need to make improvements to district facilities, including the need to renovate athletic fields. Phase One of the athletic field project focused on renovating Evaron Stadium, which was completed in August of 2018. Phase Two will include renovations to the track and football field at Thunderbolt Middle School, as well as the baseball and softball complex at Lake Habeasue High School. Upon completion or near completion of design, procurement relating to construction services will occur and will come to the board at a later date, with construction targeted to begin in late spring or early summer of 2020. Again, that same statement there for the request for qualifications that went to the board back in the spring of 2017, and the item has been reviewed and approved by purchasing.
Do we have a motion?
I move we approve 6.7 as presented.
I second it. Any discussion?
Seeing that we got ourselves in a little deep on the last one of these we did with fields, are we projecting that $2.4,600,001.5 million as the scope of what we're designing? That going to be enough funds within the process of this? Are we going to go within, go and have to rearrange some more money?
This approach we're taking, we are trying to get complete drawings beforehand so that we can go out for what we believe should be a more competitive bid, not that the other one wasn't. But because we were dealing with a budget shortfall, and we talked about that going into the first phase of Evaron Stadium, and how what was actually put on paper to renovate that facility was not at all aligned with what was communicated to the public. So I believe that's what caused the concern that that project appeared to be over budget, when in fact, on paper, it was. But to the community, what was communicated, it was not. So, this part, Phase Two, we'll have to see as we go down that road and start the drawings. Because again, what was communicated to the public, I foresee this, we may have to come back before the board and have another discussion like we did with Phase One, and say, here's what we're finding. Let's be very clear, and let's get your input as to where we go from here. I believe that we did the right thing in Phase One by being true to what was communicated. We were able to thankfully receive some increased funding from the state through other projects, where the school facilities board stepped up, or had that budgeted in bond funds. So we are now at the end of Series A, still with some bond funds remaining, with a whole lot of projects that we already talked about accomplishing, already complete. So I believe we managed that first series very well. We got a lot done. The carpet project being another one. We really accomplished a whole lot with the funds given to us. I believe we managed that appropriately. So Phase Two, I'm hopeful. But we have to wait until we really start seeing the drawings. And there'll be a whole lot of input. We're going to bring people into the table and at the table like we did for Phase One. We want to have a near-complete set of drawings so that when we go out to bid for the construction part of it, it's pretty entertaining.
Does this, did it include the services of a professional land surveyor?
No, I have EMC2 here as well. It does, there's, in the contract, you'll see that it does have...
Additional services.
Additional services there. EMC2 is our architect firm that is proposing part of this project. So they can answer any questions.
We actually did the survey every Phase One. So the top graph is survey during the fair. But we could have civil engineer working for us. We could use a whole place of these for all of us. Or the gradient range.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that last part?
We have a civil engineer on our team. And we'll use your services as part of this.
Any other discussion or questions?
The Popeye?
Yes.
John Nasten?
Yes.
Archana Aliar?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
6.8, Mr. Murray.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve funding for three-year energy management control services contract with Climate Act. The annual amount will be $9,749, with a not to exceed contract amount of $32,000, which includes four hours of specialist labor rates per year if needed. As our energy management system ages, there's a need to have predictive and proactive technical support with a focus of analyzing, detecting, continually looking for improvements, while trying to avoid catastrophic downtime. This is achieved by optimizing our energy management control systems for proper efficiencies, comfort, and operating conditions. This contract covers technical support and preventative maintenance for all our hardware and software needs, including site visits as required. Payment for these services will come from M&amp;L. This item has been reviewed by legal and approved by purchasing. An additional backup for this item is included. And we also have John Simpson and Shane from our maintenance department here. Shane does have on the computer, he'll bring it up on your screens here in just a few minutes. We wanted to just show you what the management system looks like, what we can do, and what our other HVAC technician can do to log in, as well as our sites. They're able to log into the system to look at the overall operations of our HVAC system. And they can, he can also explain what he does and how he does it.
I move that we approve 6.8 as presented.
I'll second that.
So, let's look at this first part where we discussed.
This is basically the top display. This basically shows you all the schools. We can take any school. Basically, click at that. All of our RSPs at every school have access to this tool. At a user level, not at any level if they can make any adjustments. We can go down and look at our central plant. Live data, making sure the chiller's actually operating when they're supposed to be doing. And also go back and look at our floor plans. We'll take the floor at any school, at any classroom. Basically, this helps us identify problems before we get the phone call. This is basically the look that your RSPs will look at. This gives them the opportunity to look at the computer, check the temperature, then physically go check the rooms. And Chris or I have access to this side of it, which allows us to disable, re-enable, reset, stroke valves, whatever we need to do there. And then what we're asking for on the other end of it is all the programming behind that. Then come again and help us with that.
So you have two HVAC techs in the district to manage any facilities, high facilities, including the district office. Having a system such as this allows them to look at our system from where they are, if they have an electronic access. So that way, they're not crisscrossing back and forth across town trying to troubleshoot or claim that my room is hot. At least they can assess it prior to moving from one job site to the other. This system allows them to do that. The agreement, the support agreement, allows the system to continually be upgraded and from the software point of view, and further training, and professional input and insight to our techs from this company.
So, do you have any equipment control, start, stop, test, the visual diagnostic?
Yes, we can control any chiller, any classroom. Everything but the district office.
So you could, in essence, have a unit giving you trouble, find it, and simply shut it down if you need it?
Yes.
Tech on site?
I can do it from my phone, or I can do it from my computer at my desk, or from home.
It's wonderful stuff, isn't it?
Oh, beautiful.
I've been doing this for six, seven years with computers.
Long story short, when we put the system in in 2006, I had a good rapport with the programmer that was here for a year and a half. He's no longer with the company. So I don't get free services anywhere. Yes, plus the company was sold to Bosch.
This is the same as, in my industry, we call it R and M, remote monitoring arrangements. And we can actually do this with computers. You save so many truck rolls, it's not even money. This thing will pay for itself very quickly within our district.
First off, Shane, thank you. Thank you for coming and I explaining this. Any other discussion from the board members or questions?
John Nasten?
Yes.
Archana Aliar?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
The Popeye?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Item 6.9, Mrs. Susteguel.
Madam President and governing board, it is recommended the governing board through additional funding to IDQ Visions for the video surveillance system from $500,000 to a revised not to exceed amount of $531,550. In November 2016, the voters at Lake Habeasue City approved a bond measure allowing Lake Habeasue Unified School District to upgrade their technology systems. The board approved a $500,000 bid for $500,000 to find key features on January 15, 2019. Lake Habeasue High School and Thunderbolt Middle School are requesting an increase in the overall number of cameras to improve coverage in high-risk areas and a larger portion of the outside spaces on those campuses. This includes an increase in 180-degree and 360-degree cameras with boost neck mounts for each hard-to-seen areas in corners and across large exterior areas. Additional information was electronically forwarded. Funding for this project will come from the bond and does not exceed the original amount set forth within the bond for this project. This item has been reviewed by purchasing and the business department. As of this time, our current committed total funds for this project, with the updates to the high school in Thunderbolt, are at $494,005.95. So we're still under the $500,000. We are just looking for the cushion to what was requested in the bond. The only site that hasn't been looked at is the district office. We do not expect that we're going to go over $500,000, but we don't want to stop or can have to wait to another board meeting if that is the case. But we do not actually expect to go above the $500,000. This was just to cover us because we didn't expect to get quite as close. But there wasn't an increase in total fees at the two larger sites.
I move that we approve 6.9 as presented.
Second. Do we have that extra money for the local? Where will that come from, the $31,550 if we need it? So we do have that, we have this part of the bond.
Mrs. Susteguel, did I read the backup material correctly? Part of this money for NVR mounts?
Only additional mounts for the additional canvas.
No, I mean, an NVR mount would be used to mount a recorder, server type.
The server. So we are actually not going to be using that at this time. When we were exploring what we were going to do, we were going to add additional space because of the increase of the quality of these cameras, something that Sean concerned about, is the need to increase recording space. And so we're not going to do it quite at this time, but we're going to get ready to school up to more projects with more antlers and switches.
Any discussion, any questions?
Archana Aliar?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Popeye?
Yes.
Phil Cohen?
Yes.
John Nasten?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes. Six point ten, Mr. Gardner.
Madam President, governing board, it is recommended the governing board approve a list of novels by grade level for the site for grades two through twelve. The Lake Habisu High School District is in the process of reviewing curriculum. This summer, representatives from each site and each grade band met and teams developed an essential standards list and pacing guide. Current novels were reviewed and comparisons were made on a Lexile level for each grade band. It was discovered in the process that some of the novels currently top are actually below the grade level band Lexile recommendations. In an effort to avoid redundancy and to create a current updated list of reading materials by grade level, each E L A grade team submitted their request of novels to address some gaps that conform to the reading expectations for each grade. The selected novels are listed below. This allows the board to review literary selections, and it provides consistency for what each student should engage in each grade. The literary selections are appropriate for each grade level, and each selection addresses the current requirements of the standards regarding text complexity, which include qualitative dimensions, quantitative dimensions, and reader impact considerations. The novels, second grade, Freckle Juice, Mercy Watson's The Rescue. Third grade, How It'd Be Cool in the Third Grade. Fourth grade, The Hundred Dresses, Matilda, Keeping Score. Fifth grade, Bridge to Teramithia, Hatchet, Tuck Everlasting, Esperanza Rising. Sixth grade, Paved Forward, Freak the Mighty, Bud Not Buddy, Lion, The Witch, and the Wardrobe. Old Yeller, Dog Song, Roll of Thunder, Hear My Cry, A Single Shard. Seventh grade, Chasing Lincoln's Killer, The Pearl, A Separate Peace, The Wednesday Wars. Eighth grade, Ender's Game, The Diary of Anne Frank, The War of the Worlds, A Midsummer's Night's Dream, The Outsiders. Ninth grade, The Alchemist. Tenth grade, The Iliad, Gilgamesh. Eleventh grade, The Crucible. And twelfth grade, Bail. A handout of the essential learnings by grade eight, grade level eight through twelve was requested. School literary selections for cool was provided to the governing board prior to meeting.
I make a motion, we approve six point one zero as presented.
Second.
Okay, um, any discussion or questions?
Mr. Gardner, um, on seventh grade, uh, for the novel requested, it says tentative. Second? Uh, seventh grade, knowledge requested, it says tentative.
On the list, at the time that this document was put together, the site cannot decide finally that these would be each of the twelve photo novels, and so that is no longer the case, that they're tentative. I also would like to point out from the document that the board is reviewing, this is a document that began this summer to be revised, and so we are trying to identify a common reading selection across the district, across grade levels for each quarter, so that no matter which school our district is doing attendance, they all will have read at least one common reading selection during the first quarter. And so in some cases, all four quarters have been identified, in some cases, the remaining quarters have not been identified yet, so we will be coming back to the board with additional models, because this is a work in progress.
Any else?
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Phil Cohen?
Yes.
John Nasten?
Yes.
Archie Analiar?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes. Item six point eleven, Mr. Murray.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the board approve vouchers for July twenty nineteen, and student activity funds grade eight through twelve for June of twenty nineteen, and auxiliary funds for June of twenty nineteen.
I move we approve six point one one as presented.
Second. Any discussion?
Phil Cohen?
Yes.
John Nasten?
Yes.
Archie Analiar?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
This is something I was going to ask you and everybody.
Those were the remarks. I'm glad one of the board had a copy. I was just having a think. Um, these are never called in the public, you know, they're, and I, I asked for a motion. Oh, I thought, oh, thank you.
Madam President, members of the board, I would like to again thank our community for our donations to the district. We do have a new year started, and so for this school year, we already have seventy-five hundred dollars that have been donated, and of course, we had our sixteen hundred from the Elquets for our nurses, so that will be added to that list for next month. Appreciate the continued generosity of our community. I also would like to point out in the information reports, there is an update from educational services on some of the things that are happening. We have been notified, and I, I would share this, just that I learned this on our super test, meaning that the school grades will likely be released in early September, and then because of the legislative requirement, the district will also receive a grade this year. And the state board has yet to vote on how that grade will be calculated, and so we do know that the, that the district will be receiving a grade. We also have an update from personnel. We, we opened schools, we'll target on August eighth. This is our first, our, on August fifth, would David start?
I can hold it fast.
Yeah, right, thank you. Well, for a long time, I was saying it started on the third, and that was a Saturday, so that wasn't right. Um, anyway, so we do have an update on our personnel, and I realize that you can all read this, but we do have, what's exciting is we hired forty-three new teachers this year, and eleven of those were LTHS graduates, so we do have our teachers that are, that are coming back to us and getting back to the community. Uh, there's additional information on the surveillance camera update and the personnel update, and we have included, because the board had requested that we share with them as we were developing our video agreements, we have included the employee video surveillance agreement, and discipline surveillance consent, and video release form, and then separate video release form for law enforcement, so these are forms that we've been drafting and work with. And I'd like to compliment, this is, that's a day go longer than that for the work that they're going out. And then for special services, you'll see an update as well. And then finally, our, our students participate every year in the water festival, and so there's some information about the Searr Water Festival.
I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. We are adjourned.